On to our second public hearing. This is a resolution amending the general plan and pedestrian and bicycle plan to show a connection between 53rd and 55th Streets.
Diana will make the staff presentation.
Mayor Atkins, council members. This item, oh, I need some, can I have the overhead? It's on. This item is an amendment to the general plan and the pedestrian and bicycle plan showing a pedestrian bicycle path between 55th and 53rd Streets through the Pickle Works property and the Thoroughbred property. The Pickle Works walkway and the Thoroughbred parking lot and bike way links to the bike way network via 55th and Doyle Street and 53rd Street. These amendments further general plan goal number three to establish a circulation system allowing for free movement of persons and goods and circulation objective L to establish a citywide network of interconnected pedestrian and bicycle routes to provide access to major features, attractions, and activities of the city, providing recreational benefits and reducing dependence on automobiles. So that's the part of the bicycle pedestrian plan amendment, that's the pedestrian part, and then that's the bike part of the bicycle pedestrian plan. So here's an aerial. From about 1995 to 2001, the public was allowed to traverse the Thoroughbred property going through the building on 55th Street and then through the parking lot on 53rd Street. In April, the city council initiated these amendments this year, and in May, the planning commission unanimously recommended adoption. Since then, staff has studied and rejected two alternative connections, one on the Silverman Building driveway from 55th Street to Spur Alley and one through a residential driveway and garage from 55th Street to 54th Street.
Could you trace the Silverman one again?
Which figure is it? Do you have different figures in the packet?
I don't have figure numbers with me, but I'll be showing you photos in a minute. The Silverman driveway, this is the Silverman Building, there's a bunch of different commercial and industrial uses in it.
This is figure one in the packet.
Yeah, this is figure one on this map. So then it goes from 55th Street to Spur Alley. So to see what those look like. Here's the proposed link from 55th Street through Pickle Works and on to 53rd Street through the Thoroughbred Building parking lot. Here's the first rejected link from Doyle Street through the Silverman Building driveway to Spur Alley. So that's looking at that from Spur Alley where there's a fence up.
I believe in this photograph, I believe there is a grade change, is there not?
Yes, there is.
Between Spur Alley and the driveway of a couple of feet.
So that's the reason for the rejection?
There are several reasons.
That's one reason. Diana will be going over them.
Oh, okay.
And the other, second rejected alternative is from 55th Street through a residential driveway and garage and other residential driveway to 54th Street. Currently, people who live on Doyle Street, Bodry Street, and Vallejo Street who want to go to the bus stop, the child development center, and the high school have to go down Stanford and Hollis and up 53rd to get there. To most of these, most of these walks are about a half a mile or a 10-minute walk. The proposed link through the Pickle Works and Thoroughbred properties would reduce most of these walks to about a quarter of a mile, which is about a five-minute walk, and research shows that a lot of people tend to walk a quarter mile to places. Using the first rejected alternative through the Silverman Building parking lot and driveway, most of the routes would be about the same half-mile distance as the current situation. The second rejected alternative through the residential properties would reduce most of these walks but not as much as the proposed link. So the proposed link through Pickle Works and Thoroughbred Building reduces walking distances to common destinations to shorter distances than the other two alternatives. Oh, and I forgot to mention people going from 53rd Street to the businesses on Doyle Street, too. The property owners are concerned about safety and security. You have a letter in front of you from an attorney that represents the owner of the Thoroughbred Building. However, the properties have been accessible to the public, at least up until the last few months when this was initiated. What is proposed is a walking path. Parking lots are places where people get out of their cars and walk into buildings. So it should be possible for people to walk safely through the parking lots. There is a pedestrian path from the Amtrak overcrossing through the public market parking lot, and it's been there for a while, and there haven't been any conflicts between pedestrians or bicyclists and vehicles with that walkway. There was some, so this aerial just shows, this is the Pickle Works walkway and this is the parking lot again. There was some discussion at the planning commission meeting about the idea of making the path pedestrian-only. There are pros and cons to that. On the one hand, there are pedestrian-only routes on the Powell Street Bridge and on the peninsula, so there's a forerunner there. And on the other hand, there are bike routes through parking on Spur Alley right here, through narrow gates, and through the Sheraton parking lot next to perpendicular parking. So that's been done before. This action is exempt from environmental review under three provisions of the SEQA guidelines. So in summary, this is a policy question of whether to draw lines on a map to enhance the pedestrian and bicycle network to connect two neighborhoods. Staff recommends adoption of the amendments to the general plan and the pedestrian and bicycle plan, and staff is asking for direction on whether this should be a bicycle pedestrian path or a pedestrian-only path. So that's my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I do have a question, I'll start off, which is that that question about ped-only or bike and ped was also on my mind, so I appreciate you referring to that before I had to ask you about it. So I don't have any specific questions, you just said that there's pros and cons. Do you want to go into that a little more?
Well, I'm a bike rider, so it's hard for me to be objective. There is a gate there that I probably would go really slow if I were riding my bike, and I don't think I would be terribly offended if I had to walk it. It's not very far. I think the concern is that it's
Talking like, yeah.
Possibly a safety concern if bicyclists are zooming through there and pedestrians are walking through there. So I'm having a hard time coming down on one side of the fence.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for Diana?
Yeah, I have a question. Is this, when you draw a line on a map like this, does this mean 24-hour access, or is it like the paths around the Marina which are closed at dusk?
That when you draw a line on a map like that, there are a lot of implementation decisions that can get made later when the project is actually implemented, and that's one of them.
So that if the property owner wanted to close their gates to secure their parking lot, they wouldn't be able to do that?
Well, the city
Their parking lot would have to remain open to the public, both Thoroughbred and the Pickle Works.
When the city, you want to answer that one?
It would depend on how it gets implemented.
So you could draw this line on a map, and you have no certainty with whether it would be 24-hour access or what kind of requirements it would be a path, and implementation would follow. Thank you, Michael.
If I can, if I can make some comments about this, you know, one of the things that disturbs me the most about this is when we did the 1987 general plan, these properties were zoned as residential properties, they were not zoned as commercial properties. I worked with Andy to get these properties zoned for how, for commercial, and part of that agreement was to have this access through there. And after the thing went through, then they decided they don't want to have the access anymore. There should be some, something back to the city for rezoning those properties to allow them to develop as commercial properties. I think that was one of the mistakes I made on the city council, because if they were residential, they would have tied the Doyle Street residential to Emery Bay Village, and we would have had a nice situation over there. So I admit I made a mistake by working to get these zones commercial. But for these property owners to be so objective to having this access is really beyond me. They're both community-minded people, and they should provide this access without any difficulty. And when I, when they first put together their project, they had a joint parking lot with access on 55th and 53rd Street, and the minute that I told Andy that the bike access was going to be required, the plan automatically changed and the access was withdrawn. So I just want to make those comments. That's how this started, and for them to object to this is wrong, I think.
Well, I don't think, this is really, it's a policy decision for the council as to whether you think including this bike pack irrespective of any history, whether that is what the council wants to do to enhance the pedestrian and bicycle circulation of the city.
Okay.
I think what is in the past is in the past and really has no bearing on the question before you.
It's a perfect segue, Mayor, to what I wanted to say. I wasn't on the city council in the past, but I ran for the city council last year, and one of the important messages that I got out as a candidate was that we needed to improve access for pedestrians and bicycles in the city. And the way to do that is to first figure out where to improve access. I made a presentation back in March of my ideas, and my goal was to have people critique my ideas, add other ideas, and that did occur, and that was great. One of the things that I suggested was a designating this path that we're talking about tonight. I also suggested a number of other pedestrian paths throughout the city, and I hope we can get those done as well. But the reason I think that it's important to figure out where to have all the connections is because if you only have one path from one place to another, that's isolated still. You need to have a whole network throughout the city so that you can walk the whole city. So this I see as just one part of a bigger effort to designate other places to get through, because there are quite a few places in the city where we have these huge blocks, and I think that we can find places to have pedestrians go through, just like here. We're not talking about a place, a line, we're not drawing a line where we're going through a building. And there are a lot of other places in the city where we can draw a few lines, we're not going through a building, there might be a fence in the way. So I think that the goal here is to get a policy in place of having places where we think that paths can be. Now, how we get that path is another question. One of the thoughts that I had back in March was that some of the places in the city, we need to say, okay, we're going to put this on the map, and at the point that the property is developed, we're going to say to the developer, okay, well, we for some time have thought that this place that you're developing would be a good place for pedestrian access, so we would like you to incorporate that into whatever development plan you have. Other places in the city, I think that we need to be more proactive, and we need to, for example, build a bridge across the railroad tracks. And so that's something I would not wait for development, I would like to get that done sooner rather than later. But I think tonight, we're just talking about getting this network, improving the network. I shouldn't say getting, I mean, we have a pretty good network, I think, but we need to improve it, so those are my comments.
I move a pool
We have to open the public hearing, so I'll do that. Any members of the public wishing, or wishing to speak, I guess including the property owners can come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Atkins, council members. First of all, I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. My name's Matthew Gray, I'm a land use attorney representing HFH Limited, the owner of the Thoroughbred property across which the alignment has been proposed this evening. The alignment, this proposed pathway, does have significant environmental effects that haven't been identified, evaluated, or disclosed to the public. It proposes to create a new bicycle and pedestrian thoroughfare where none existed before. The entire purpose of the project by design is to divert trips from elsewhere, improving the circulation system and bringing people, providing new access to city attractions. That's contained in the city's proposed resolution, it's within the general plan policy that is said to support this action. And yet, the city hasn't done any study of how many trips are anticipated to use this facility, where they're going to come from, how it'll affect the surrounding neighborhoods to have increased bicycle traffic running through, running through them. There's been no evaluation of those potential environmental effects at all. Perhaps most importantly, the staff report for the action proposes that the need for this is created so that children can access the, a couple of schools that are located on 53rd Street, yet there's no analysis of how it'll serve the city's interests to have parents and their children who are accessing school in the mornings and evenings do so through a busy parking lot where there's no separate alignment or sidewalk on which for them to use. Instead, if you go look at the site, they'll be required to walk down the middle of a busy parking lot where cars pull in and out all day, delivery trucks, employees, and everybody else. Not only should there be an evaluation of the hazards of the city directing pedestrian and bicycle traffic to that location, but we think it's fair for the city to consider what the liability is of putting a proposed pathway and directing pedestrians and bicyclists to a busy parking lot. Now, the city has pointed to three SEQA exemptions that it says apply here. Actually, if you look at the circumstances here, none of the exemptions apply, and in fact, the fact that the city is still pointing to these exemptions to us reveals a misunderstanding of the historic facts surrounding this portion of the city. The city argues that there's, this is only a minor alteration of land and a minor alteration to an existing public or private condition, but there has never been, this was resolved at the planning commission hearing, there has never been public access at this location via the Pickle Works courtyard connecting to the Thoroughbred parking lot to connect 53rd Street to 55th Street. That is a new connection, a new right-of-way, and it's one that needs to be evaluated by the city through the SEQA process. Alternatively, the city says that it should be exempt because there's no possible environmental impact, but for the reasons I've already stated, this just isn't the case. There are impacts that are important that the city consider and disclose to the public. The city has identified some alternatives in its staff report. First of all, no alternatives were presented to the planning commission before it was asked to make a recommendation, and in addition, none of the alternatives that have been presented have been analyzed for their ability to reduce the impacts that I'm talking about, the hazards that are created from putting a path through a parking lot. That's what alternatives matter for, is their ability to reduce or avoid impacts that might be created. I'd also request that the council might consider alternatives that appear to have been ignored, including increasing use of the Emery Go-Round to better connect these two neighborhoods, or perhaps create an improved pathway through the 55th Street Community Garden, which is an empty block that would require no demolition. I believe it's outside the city limits, but there's no, there's nothing about that fact that would seem to imply that the city couldn't coordinate the improvement of a bike path at that location without any demolition, and in the process, perhaps enhancing the neighborhood. Finally, I just wanted to reiterate on behalf of the property owner that we feel there are significant economic damages that would inure to these properties from having a pedestrian and bicycle thoroughfare imposed through the middle of them. The tenants and the existing and the prospective tenants of these buildings are like many others throughout the city of Emeryville, they're high-technology companies, they're ones that value research and development and intellectual property, and privacy and security are of utmost importance to them. And there would be significant economic damage associated with those, that privacy and security being taken away or compromised. It would impede our ability to keep these buildings rented and to keep them rented for the values that they currently yield, and we feel it's important that the council consider that and take it into account and disclose that to the public. So I appreciate very much the opportunity to address you tonight, and I'm obviously happy to answer questions if you have any for me. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other members, any questions for him? Any members of the public? Anybody else wishing to speak? This is a public hearing, so once it's closed, it's closed.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Atkins. I'm Adam Eigner, residing at Doyle Street Cohousing.
Adam, could you, could you speak? There, yeah, thanks.
And I'm a lot shorter than this microphone. Okay. And so I wanted to first thank you for having
Talk closer to it, actually.
And inexperienced with this microphone, how's that?
That's good, Adam.
Okay. So I wanted to first thank you all very much for having this resolution on the agenda. I'm very pleased to support it. I, as one of those parents who would be, would very much like to be able to walk through that parking lot with my 10-month-old son in a stroller, it would be a vast improvement for me over the long circuitous route that I have to take right now to move from Doyle Street around, as was stated, it's a good 10-minute walk, and it involves passing through, crossing a number of streets. The alternatives would cause me to pass through parking lots as well and streets. So I think the direct route would be a huge improvement for my family and my neighbors in being able to access a neighborhood that we hardly ever get to because it is such a long route for us right now. Right now, in order to get to 53rd Street, we have to go up San Pablo or around on Hollis, and it's very noisy, and I'm often trying to push my son and get him to sleep for a nap, so I really am confined to a small neighborhood right now. So in support of that, well, actually, I wanted to respond to a couple of things that the gentleman was saying. I think actually the prospective tenants would perhaps see a benefit, those over in the 53rd Street building being able to come over to our neighborhood in Doyle Street, access the Doyle Street Greenway and the Doyle Street Cafe. We certainly walk through parking lots at our own peril, and, you know, I think we're all pretty careful as parents what we do, so I don't see that as something I'm particularly concerned about. I mean, I don't think it's any worse, and I think it's actually a lot better to be able to get to the Child Development Center easily. In support of this, my wife, Evelyn Herrera, printed up a petition just a couple days ago, and we didn't have much time to circulate it, just as I was walking around in my limited neighborhood with a stroller for about an hour yesterday, I got a few signatures from neighbors, just people who were out on the street, and another one of our neighbors who's in support, Judy Timmel, made the long trip around to 53rd Street and got a few more signatures. Nobody opposed it, everybody was supportive who we encountered. So I would like to present this petition with 31 signatures acquired in a little under two hours, which basically says we're in support of it, but then saying we request the council affirm the plan and initiate access to pedestrian and bicycles as stated without undue delay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Adam, and can you just turn that into the city manager, the petition? And I'm a little negligent in reminding anybody who's spoken to be sure to sign in on the clipboard, so we can get your name and proper ID there, so. And also, I think it was Adam who shared with me recently, there's 11 children living in Cohousing now, so that's really wonderful. Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Hi, my name is Michelle Turnus Nugent, and I live in Cohousing with Adam. I've been living there for 14 years, and every day I walk the long walk to the Emery Go-Round to go to MacArthur Bart, and every evening I come back and walk the long walk back to my house. When it was opened before through the building, I used to take that route that would cut through, actually cut through the building in the parking lot and we're talking about now, cutting through the kind of alley, and it made my commute extremely fast and very convenient. I understand the worry for safety, and one point that no one has mentioned yet is that when we cut through the building, there was a security officer who was there the whole time, and she opened the door for us and walked us through and shut the door, and if something like that can be arranged for us to walk through the proposed route, if that makes the business owners feel more comfortable, I don't really see what was wrong with that. Yeah, that's it. It would make it a lot more convenient, and it would really open up the traffic, I think it would benefit the businesses on Doyle Street as well. So, thank you.
Thanks. Be sure to sign in. Any other members of the public? Fran?
Good evening, I'm Fran Turnus, I live at 5514 Doyle Street, and I wanted just, if I might, just mention, so Furman Ken said that we did walk through the build through, Andy Getz's building, and we did walk through the parking lot also, so there was an issue then in those days of walking through the parking lot, and I thought most of the cars came in and parked and stayed there all day. There are, of course, deliveries in that building, but walking through that parking lot, I don't think is the safety issue that the owner's attorney expressed. And I didn't, I'm also here, of course, to support that, going through that way to the Emery Go-Round and going to the Child Development Center would be a great convenience for us and hook us up to that neighborhood in a way that we're really completely cut off from now. So thank you very much, and I hope you do affirm it.
Hi, Ron.
Good evening, council members, mayor. As you know, I'm Ron Mooney, I'm the, one of the owners of the Pickle Works Building, California Serpent Extract. As you know, we oppose this, I'm sure that I know the outcome of the vote tonight, as you clearly stated it in April, so I'm not sure that you're taking this in, but we believe that there'll be significant property or damage to our property by the taking of the property and by the reduced privacy to our tenants and ourselves, and in fact, our tenants have told us they do not want people to be able to walk by so that they can have, hear their conversations going in on the courtyard, which is an amenity that we give. And having only a 10-foot or so dimly lit pathway through there is certainly a concern of us. Also, as bicycles might be coming down or northbound on that path onto 55th Street sidewalk, it's blind there, the building blocks it, you're not going to be able to see, so that certainly is a concern of ours. The planning commission vote, by the way, was not unanimous, at least the planning commission that I was at, and I believe that was it. And I'm not sure the anger, but I'll heed the city attorney's words that this isn't about passing, but I can assure you that California Serpent Extract had no joint plans with the Getz's partnership on development of that property. We never had any agreement to allow access through there, so that just is not true.
Did you have plans for one, and you didn't have an agreement? I saw plans with the joint development of that parking lot.
We never had plans, our property never had plans with the Getz.
Okay. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, close the public hearing. I, I'll lead off with the council comments, because we have time to comment, right? You see, you're looking
At some point, I would like to respond to
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Some of the points in the letter.
Go ahead. Let's staff
And I'll likely be a little bit long-winded, so please bear with me. Again, as I've indicated, this really is a policy action that the council's being asked to consider in furtherance of existing general plan policies to enhance and improve the circulation generally within the city and specifically as to pedestrian bicycle circulation. And I believe this item that's before you tonight would clearly provide an enhanced pedestrian and bicycle access to the 53rd, 55th, and Doyle Street area. In opposition to this, to this item, council for one of the property owners, HFH Limited, claims that the proposal will create serious hazards for bicyclists and pedestrians, and that it will also cause substantial economic damage. As to the claim of economic damage, while the council is certainly free to weigh these alleged economic hardships in formulating your policy decisions, the same alleged economic consequences of the proposed consequences of the proposed action have no bearing on the analysis required under SEQA. As it relates to the allegations that we are going to create serious hazards for bicyclists and pedestrians, I think it's worth noting that the property owners have put forth no evidence whatsoever in support of that position to suggest that somehow by creating this pedestrian path that we are causing hazards or creating hazards, there's just no evidence in support of that blanket statement. And I think, in fact, the, the city's experience with a similar pedestrian easement, which goes through the Emeryville Public Marketplace connecting to the Amtrak pedestrian overcrossing, which I believe from an objective standpoint is in a location that is much a busier location than what is proposed here. That has been without incident in nearly 10 years that it's been in existence. Further, there's been no evidence whatsoever suggests that there were any safety problems occurring during the time that the pathway in the location that we're talking about while it was in prior use. The, the letter goes on to suggest that the location of the pathway was selected based on flawed information. And clearly, while the overall pathway is somewhat different, the bulk of the pathway remains within the parking lot area of, of the Thoroughbred Building. And the area of change relates to taking the sort of northerly segment of this proposed path that went, used to go through the Thoroughbred Building area to a walkway that is, separates the Thoroughbred and Pickleworks Building. And I believe this sort of change is a very negligible change and it is obviously in a place that I think is objectively less objectionable. I think property owners or anybody in general would rather have a pedestrian path going through the, around a building rather than through it as was previously allowed. The letter goes on to suggest that there are significant potential environmental effects from placing this thoroughbed through this, the pedestrian bicycle through or fair, excuse me, through private property. And I think there's an attempt to sort of emphasize the use of the path by children as a means to try to play up this supposed hazard. And I think the fact of the matter is, is that as a, as a pathway was in existence before with no problem, we have this prior experience with the pathway over at the Public Marketplace. And there's been no problems there. And then also, I think back in, at the time that H F H Limited obtained their approvals from the city to redevelop their site, while it certainly wasn't imposed as a condition of approval, I believe there were suggestions, representations made at that time that that pathway, that access point would be allowed and there were never any objections from my recollection about safety concerns at that time. The, additionally, the notion that there is some great hazard by allowing people and perhaps bicyclists to access and go through this parking lot forgets and loses sight of the fact that this is a parking lot where people come, they park their cars, they get out of their cars and they walk through the parking lot to get to the building. Further, the, the Thoroughbred Building project, I believe, was required to provide facilities for bicyclists who are going to the building as, as tenants. And so the notion that bicyclists may be going through a parking lot is, is nothing new to this location. And I am unaware and have yet to hear anything in the record that there are problems with people accessing the parking lot and walking through it to get to their building or bicyclists driving through there. So I think this whole notion that somehow we need to do extensive environmental review for a, some hazard is, is clearly without any support in the record. There is also a notion that we need to do some sort of an alternatives analysis and I believe the, the commission asked staff to look at that. Certainly in terms of formulating policy, you can look at alternatives, but there's no requirement that you do so. And the city is not preparing an E I R where you might have an alternatives analysis as required by SEQA. And we are not undertaking these various evaluations because of the fact that the project is exempt from SEQA. SEQA is a statutory being that was created by the legislature and they created exemptions from those regulations to allow minor projects to go through without any environmental analysis. So this, this attempt to create this record that there is a hazard is, I think, without The, also the, the idea that somehow the, it was surprising, they say, that the city would subject itself to liability for injuries to pedestrians or bikeless who use a pathway that the city has located through a bustling parking lot. I would just say, obviously, this is more of a, a policy thing for you to keep in mind, but I think it goes without saying that the city operates numerous such facilities for which the city faces potential liability all the time. And if we never undertook any activity that had an element of risk, we wouldn't be in the business of providing police and fire services or parks or bike paths or streets or recreation programs. The city is in the business of providing services and their risks that go along with that, and this is one of them. As it relates to the, the SEQA exemptions, SEQA Guidelines 15060 says, okay, you get a project, first thing you do is you look at to see if you have a project that's subject to SEQA. And clearly, here we have a activity that involves a discretionary act by the council. You're considering this item tonight, that's a discretionary act. And so I think it's clear that you, the item is subject to SEQA. The next step you take is you review that action to see if it is exempt from SEQA. And staff believes that there are three categories of exemptions under which this activity would fall. The first is 15301 of the state SEQA guidelines. And if you give me a moment to turn to that, 15301 reads that Class 1 consists of the operation, repair, maintenance permitting, leasing, licensing, or minor alteration of existing public or private structures, facilities, mechanical equipment, or topographical features involving negligible or no expansion of use beyond that existing at the time of the lead agency's determination. The types of existing facilities itemized below, and there are a laundry list that are, that are listed that I'm not going to go into, are intended to be all, are not, rather, excuse me, are not intended to be all-inclusive of the types of projects which might fall within Class 1. The key consideration is whether the project involves negligible or no expansion of an existing use. And I believe we have a situation here where we had the ability of the public to walk through the parking lot as well as through a building. I believe that there's possibly a record of that commitment made by the property owner. Again, I don't believe it was imposed as a condition of approval, but clearly, the public had the right to, to access through there. And it was only once a particular tenant took over the entire facility that then the property owner felt compelled to close that off. Next, the, the other exemption is 15304, the state SEQA guidelines, and that is minor alterations to land. Class 4 consists of minor public or private alterations in the condition of land, water, and/or vegetation which do not involve removal of healthy, mature scenic trees except for forestry and agricultural purposes. Examples include, and there's a long laundry list, and the creation of bicycle, bicycle lanes on existing rights of way. I believe there's, there's an argument to, to be made that there was an existing facility there and that we are merely minor, making minor alterations to that. The last, and I think is the most compelling one, is the, under 15061B3, which is that a project is exempt from SEQA if the activity is covered by the general rule that SEQA applies only to projects with, have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. Where it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment, the activity is not subject to SEQA. And I think there's a couple definitions that you need to look at. And significant effect on the environment means a substantial or potentially substantial adverse change in any of the physical conditions within the area affected by the project, including land, air, water, minerals, flora, fauna, ambient noise, and objects of historic or aesthetic significance. And I, again, don't believe that there's anything in the record to suggest that there's any possibility whatsoever that by merely creating this possibility for a realignment of what was heretofore a facility that the public had access to, that somehow that's going to cause a significant effect on the environment. And with that, I believe your, your staff is recommending approval of the, of the resolution should the council wish to make that policy decision.
Thank you. I, I want to comment, let other councilmembers comment again. As, as people know, the city's engaged in a general plan update and in the process of that update, a very good report was published by the consultants that are helping to guide this process, its Opportunities and Challenges Report. And I'll just have a, put out a plug if any members of the public want to get a copy to check with the Planning Department because it is very good. And it talks about the need to improve our internal connectivity. And this policy matter before us tonight, in one small way, kind of starts to realize that issue and, and achieve that goal. I also just want to say that since I was a resident off of 53rd Street for a period of time, there are at least two people I know, myself included, and this is in full disclosure, that actually remember walking alongside the Thoroughbred Building on the outside of the building, not through the building, to get from 53rd to 55th Street. And the other person who has the same memory at some point in time is a former resident who recently left Mount Mark Alpert. And I know that there was a discussion about whether exterior access was ever permitted at the Planning Commission. And at least there are two people in town who have that memory of being able to walk through the parking lot alongside the edge of the, the Thoroughbred Building. So at this point, any other council comments or is there a motion?
I have some, I have some more comments I want to make here. Now, unfortunately, contrary to the general plan, we allowed the owner of the Thoroughbred Building to buy those rail spurs. And, and the acquisition of two of those spurs was a very contentious fight and, and it resulted in the property owner allowing pedestrian bike access through those portions of the existing parking lot. So there's already a precedent for, for pedestrian bikes going through the parking areas for the Thoroughbred Building. And that should be noted as part of our, our, our point of view. So I think that had those properties been developed residential, that access would have been provided without any problem. I, I think these property owners are very ungrateful for not, for not, for handling it this way. And with that, I move approval, approval of the staff recommendation.
Second.
Yeah, Mayor Atkins, I have a few comments to make. I, I believe that the city attorney, Mike Biddle, is absolutely correct when he says this really is not a SEQA matter. And I think he expressed that very well. But I am troubled by this particular process. You know, th- this is a tough situation here, although it's very clear that this will, will pass very strongly. But one person or a group of persons' benefit certainly leads to other people having a, a problem or have, suffering some damage. I'm concerned by that, but, you know, these things happen all the time in making decisions. I was, although I'm generally very, very supportive and believe our staff does a praiseworthy job, I was dismayed by the staff's presentation on this. I believe they did not do a thorough job on the historical aspects of this whole property. And that's one thing I'm concerned about, the, the staff presentation. Second thing on the staff was they, the staff considered alternatives, which as Mike pointed out, we don't have any burden to do that. But this is a, a clearly an important issue. The staff dismissed the other alternatives. I'm really not comfortable with that. I would have liked to have seen more public discussion. In, in terms of, Mr. Biddle said, he, when I addressed the issue of 24-hour access for this bike, ped path, or whatever it turns out to be, that will come later in the implementation. Well, I read the police reports in Emeryville every month and I know the amount of criminal activity that takes place. And I'm concerned about a property like the Thoroughbred or the Ron's property, that on the weekends, perhaps no one's there, they, they wouldn't, they're not going to be allowed to close off their parking lot, which incurs some kind of problems for them. These are, these are issues that aren't important to the people who want to walk directly from Ron Street to the other, but they, there's something that I think about. I think it's important that we improve the connectivity in this city. And I think Councilmember Fricki has done an excellent job of putting forward different proposals in improving the, the bike, ped experience and the connectivity. But I'm concerned that on this particular item, we're making a general plan amendment on one short piece of an overall city plan. And we're in the process of a general plan, so I'm, I'm concerned about that, whether it's being taken out of context and it's not part of an overall process. I'm not going to vote for this and I, I know that I'm definitely in the minority here, but there are several issues about this particular process that concerns me. They're my comments.
There's been a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bukowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
No.
Councilmember Fricki.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cassis.
Aye.
Mayor Atkins.
Aye, and I'd also just like to let the, the record reflect that I think this, this connection actually makes more sense as a ped-only rather than bike and ped.
Well, we, I would like to talk about that.
But that comes back later.
Well, no, we would like to-
We are changing the, the general plan, the, the bike, ped plan, so that's something that we can talk about.
That is germane for you right now to give us direction on.
Say it again?
That is germane for you to give us some direction on right now. That's what we're asking for.
I just stated what my preference is. I, I don't think for bicyclists, they're gonna, that's a very useful connection and going to be used a whole lot. And I think it makes more sense just for ped-only.
I would suggest, if it's the pleasure of the council to designate this only as a ped connection and not a bike connection, you need to modify the resolution that's before you.
Would, would the people who made the motion accept a amendment?
Well, I, I think this should be- Well, I think this should be a bicycle connection. I don't see any reason why you would not make it a bicycle connection. I mean, bicycles are already permitted through the other areas of their parking lots, so why should this area of the parking lot be any different than the other existing?
The reason why I think it's better as ped-only is because it's a narrow area, because the spirality is much bigger, and the potential for a bicyclist to incur injury going through a narrow area or with passing a pedestrian at that time, I think it's not so smart.
Well, let me suggest that we could start it out as ped-bike access, and that if we have problems, it could be modified to be ped-only.
That's what I was going to suggest, is I'd like to give this a try. We can even, if we have to and we have problems, before we would change away from bike-ped, we could even have a requirement on the narrowest places that the bicyclists walk their bikes for a short distance. But let's give it a try and see how it works.
Yeah, I think that a sign that, I think, Ruth, that your point is well-taken on the portion that's narrow, but actually, if you look at the length of the connection, a significant majority of that is through a parking lot.
Right, I'm just talking about the place by the building.
So that section, the narrower section, you know, bicyclists are, I think, generally careful. And so when you are on a bike in a narrow place, and when you approach a circumstance that Ron Mooney described, where you're obviously approaching a sidewalk and it's a blind corner, a person on a bicycle is going to slow down. So, but I also think that Dick is right, if it doesn't, if there's anecdotal information that bicyclists are going through there too fast, then we could put up a sign that says bikes must walk.
So, can we condition this approval on that contingency?
Sure, if you want to modify, if the council wants to modify its resolution, it can do that here.
Well, I would suggest starting out with what Dick suggested.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think we should go with it as it is, and then come back, and we can always go through this process again if we have to modify it.
Okay, I just wanted to make my preference.
No, I understand. And I'd like to make sure that, because I think Ron makes a good point in terms of that coming out there on to the street, you know, from alongside the building, that maybe one of those large mirrors that lets you see in a couple of directions.
We're not even there yet.
Yeah, the implementation, that's a separate issue.
Gotcha, understand, okay.
Okay, well, thank you for having this recent discussion.
Are you going to allow for the bicycles to start with, and then?
Yeah, sort of do it.
We already voted on it.
Yeah, so the next...